Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Welcome to the September 7th, 2011 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Commissioner Williams, your dog today?
Okay, Jack, what type of dog do we have here?
Well, today Commissioner, we got a, I believe, a chow shepherd or chow lab mix. It's got the purple tongue, found on Victory Avenue in Lorraine. It'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock. And this dog is, takes to, you know, get a little bit too, and he likes, he likes me. He likes to, he likes to play, but like I say, anybody walking by, he has to warm up too, but still, this is a real nice dog. And he was due for adoption today, but I tell you what, because I know that nobody was going to come in for him today because we had nobody outside, had nobody outside, so I figured I'd go ahead and promote this dog. Currently, we've got about 42 dogs at the kennel. We need some help in anything we can do. And that's about it, other than now, you know, just thank everybody for their support that come in, you know, patrons of the kennel. And we do a lot of good things out there. Thank you.
Have any good guard dogs out there?
Uh, two of them.
Two of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I may have to stop down there.
(laughing).
All right, thanks a lot, Jack.
Protect from yourself.
Madam Clerk?
I'm going to do O'Donnell first, right?
Yes.
Today, we have Alan Beal, Deputy Director, O'Dot, District 3, and Kimberly Conklin, Manager, Lorraine County Garage, and we're going to do you first.
Either one, Alan.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
What I'd like to do is take a few minutes this morning, because I feel it's extremely important to the Department of Transportation and my personal belief on how we can improve as far as our customer focus with, with the locals. Just to give you a little bit of a background, with the Department of Transportation, organizationally speaking, we have the District Deputy Director, obviously that runs the entire district office, which in the case of District 3 includes eight counties in our district. Each county has an employee which is referred to as the County Manager, and the County Manager really is responsible for the day-to-day operation of that county. So all of our road crews that you see go out there filling potholes, or ditching, or what have you, are directed by the County Manager. Now, obviously, somebody in my position, you know, we come and go every four years, every eight-year cycle, so, so it's not as important that the locals get to know me as it is to get to know the County Manager who withstands the test of time and administration changes. That being said, our County Manager in Lorraine County, Bill Kruger, recently retired after 30-some years of service with the Department of Transportation. And I want to take this opportunity to introduce to the Commissioners our new County Manager for Lorraine County, and she's going to get up in a minute or so to speak for herself. Kimberly Conklin, who has been with the department for eight years now, was actually a transfer. She was the Medina County Manager prior to being appointed the position here in Lorraine County. Basically took a county, which at the time she was made the appointment in Medina County was probably one of our weaker counties as far as how it was operating, so she was able to really take that county and turn it around into a much better operating county when it comes to meeting the public expectation. So I think she's definitely been tested and will be an asset to Lorraine County. So with that, I'd like to invite Kimberly to come up here and introduce herself and let her tell you what she has in her agenda for the future for Lorraine County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in. I won't take a lot of your time, I just wanted to mainly have the opportunity to meet you. I haven't had this opportunity before. I've been in Lorraine County for a very short amount of time at this stage of the game, primarily focused on taking what the county is doing there, learning how their operations run, and how we can better improve that in the future in terms of, you know, our customer focus, et cetera. I'm now sort of moving into a new segue of trying to get out and, you know, meet the officials. I have the opportunity to come here today, later this month, I'll have the opportunity to meet with the trustees. They've been kind enough to invite me to their agenda as well, so I will have that opportunity as well. We've been dealing with, in this very short amount of time, a lot of drainage issues in the county. With the amount of rain that we have had this year, it's been instrumental. I'm sure most of the other departments are dealing with the same type of issues that we're dealing with as well, and we're trying to get to each of those as quickly as possible. If there's something on your agenda that you have some interest in, or would like to know some updates on, please don't hesitate to give me a call. I would be more than happy to meet with you and discuss those items with you. Going forward into the future, we're looking at all of our concerns, you know, in our long-range plan, planning out next year's work plan, as well as the years following that. Sometimes it seems like we're not doing a lot because it takes a little while to get some of these projects rolling. I don't ever want you to feel that, but so if you have any concerns, questions, anything along those lines, please don't hesitate to call. I'm going to leave some business cards with Teresa, so that if anyone has an interest or something in particular you're interested in hearing about, I would love to take the time to meet with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Alan. All right. Thank you. Alan, are you serving as the alternate on No Waka to Myron? Yes. Are you? Okay, good. Madam Clerk?
At 11 o'clock, we'll hear from the Veterans, under Job and Family, or Resolutions, Job and Family Services Bills?
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Appropriations.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
No advances, no repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Board of Elections, authorize the disposal of the punch card voting system that was last used in August 2005. Total estimated valuation is under $2,500.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Board of Elections, authorize the disposal of the punch card voting system that was last used in August 2005. Total estimated valuation is under $2,500.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictions of Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I do have a few issues I wish to discuss with the Board in Executive Session, one being a potential hire at the 911 Agency, and also some issues with labor contracts. Specifically, we still have the Teamster contract for the, excuse me, the detention home that we should review or at least discuss, and some outstanding issues with one of the FOP contracts. Both of those subjects are allowable for Executive Session discussions, and I would ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into Executive Session and have those talks. Thank you.
Joining the National Moment of Remembrance of the 10th Anniversary of September 11th, everyone is asked to come together as a nation and observe a moment of silence to last for one minute, beginning at 1:00 PM, and seize all work or other activity to the maximum extent practicable, and marking the moment in an appropriate manner, including by ringing bells, blowing whistles, or sounding sirens.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, if we could, I received from the Department of Public Safety through Tom Keller, our EMA Director, the Ohio Department of Public Safety has released a short film in honor of the 10th Anniversary of 9/11. It is available at www公 public safety dot ohio dot gov during the month of September. There's a complete list of participants, participants that I remember, September 11th. Gene Thomas, Ohio Task Force One member, Technical Search Specialist, Angela Lesko, Willoughby Hills Fire Department, Dr. Randy Marriott, Ohio Task Force One member, Steve Schubert, Ohio Task Force One member, Jack Reall, Ohio Task Force One member, Mike Palumbo, Ohio Task Force One member, and Darrell Perkins, volunteer Box 21 Rescue Squad Dayton. It's a very good film. I will give this to Hal to put up on our camera, so you can look it up. Thank you.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
We need a development and trying to agree with Cold Water Consulting LLC to apply for the Great Lakes Restoration Innovative Grant, requests for $1 million to create 21 jobs on restoration of Black River and improvement water quality. Said services will cost $4,000 to pay from contract services account and authorize County Ministry to execute the application.
So moved.
Second. Don, do you want to come up? I didn't think there was any backup data in the packet.
This is the one we talked about. I was, again, we were supposed to bring it up from the floor at the end of the meeting.
Oh, last week.
Last week, and, and we, we had such a difficult week there, and some of the issues we were dealing with, I had forgot to remind you.
Right.
That I needed a quick resolution for this. Not that Don couldn't give you more information on this, but there's only going to be six of these grants available. And, and the component is to put people that are currently being served to the workforce development system into some jobs. So we had to have a job creation component, and we had to work with the Workforce Development Agency to make sure that we had the proper folks that could, could be eligible for employment in this grant. So I think it's pretty exciting that they're doing job creation as an element of, of being able to receive the grant. Competition's going to be keen, there's only $6 million out there.
And that we pay $4,000 to get $1 million?
If, if we're successful, and as you know, we've, we've, we've had to do this before, and we haven't always been successful, but sometimes you've got to spend money to try to bring money home.
Okay. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve amendments to various resolutions authorized in state fiscal year 11 with various vendors, and change in date from September 30, 2011 through December 31, 2011. One, Resolution 10450, June 30, 2010, Tom and Grahan Overland First Step Agreement increased value by $37,500. Resolution 10670, September 22, North Center, Lorraine, Career Corridors Agreement increased value by $25,000. Resolution 10671, September 22, Vocational Guide and Services, Alariah, the work agreement increased value by $25,000.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, receive and file annual report in accordance with Ohio Reuse Code 311.16 of all fines and costs collected by the Sheriff's Office for the year next preceding September 1, 2011, in the amount of $505,888.53.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, we had a discussion on some companies that were brought to our attention and may have had some defects. We were going to award bids. I believe Mr. Thayer was here, and he discussed that, and we had an opportunity to take a look at, at those issues, and being that it was a short week, we didn't get it on the agenda, but, Don, I don't have the policy. I have the, the awarding resolution that you asked for, but I didn't get a copy of the policy that, so I really want to have a little brief discussion with the Board on that, what we're recommending, so that we can move forward possibly with, with awarding some of these contracts. So feel them a tiny sensitive, you can just do it from the podium.
Thank you. The administrative staff and myself were, you know, taking a look at what we're doing currently, and then some things to address issues that were brought up. What we've identified is to continue to ensure that, or we would recommend that we continue ensuring that the company has a proper workers' compensation coverage, and that they are in compliance with the rules and regulations as they are, that they are current with the property taxes, and through that, we would be checking the Lorraine County Auditor's site for those companies located in Lorraine County. That we conduct a certified search of the state auditor's findings for recovery, so that if there are any outstanding issues with the state and their rules, the auditor puts together a list of companies. And how it works is we enter in the name of the company, and it'll let us know whether or not there are any matches to the company name or the individual.
You know, Commissioners, with, with that, if there's a, a potential defect discovered on a primary bidder or responder to an RFP, we'll give them the opportunity to clarify that information, because sometimes information isn't updated as, as quickly as we'd like to believe, so we'll give them an opportunity before passing them by to comment on those things. But what we need from the Board is a resolution saying that these things have to be either corrected or have been corrected, and that these type of deficiencies will preclude them from being a bidder on county projects. That's your decision.
From being awarded a bid, because we're not going to pre-check every company that bids, are we?
No, and I, and I probably misstated it.
Yeah.
We will not award bids to, and, and to those vendors. That's your choice. Now, there's no legal requirement out there that you don't do that. This, this would be your procedure. I need to make that clear. The, the, while I believe that everybody should be following every rule and every regulation wherever they are, we're not required to check those things. This is something that came up and you wanted to look at a little more, and if you wanted, if you want to do that, we, we can, but you'll need to do that by resolution, so that somebody doesn't bid, come in and say, "Well, you don't have something that says that that disqualifies me." You need to have that on, on your, on your books, so to speak.
Well, I would make that motion to make sure everyone reaches those goals before we award a bid to them.
Right, I, I agree. So a second. Anything further? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
So in essence, that those, that bid that we were holding, we'll have to reject and send back out for bid? Or do we have a second bidder?
We do have a second bidder, and then we would also have to provide him an opportunity.
To rectify that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm, I'm passing down this to the Clerk. This was part of that package with, with some of the contracts, and we're going to ask that those be awarded today, because they're, they're, they're good.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
They have to be read, don't they?
Yeah. The whole resolution has to Teresa.
Okay. This is not what was brought up last week. This is nothing totally different.
No, this is Crossroads Asphalt. It's a, I'm sorry, it is the, we were already out to bid on this one, and it's an asphalt project, the resurfacing of two streets in Sheffield Township, and we're just a little bit concerned with the weather. They only make asphalt for a limited amount of time.
That's my bad. In fact, you, you, I thought it was tagged, it was tagged the last week's issue, but we needed the policy passed.
Correct.
So we could do these. Sandy's on vacation this week, I'm missing nine on my 10 fingers, so it's, I apologize for confusing the Board a bit on that, but...
Do you have the other two that were on hold?
Uh, those could wait a week. We want to make sure that the policy was passed and that we would go back and check those. Those are home repairs, one's a furnace, so the weather isn't as big a deal there. The other is a roof, but it's a single roof, so we still have plenty of time to do that. The asphalt is a little more concerning to us.
Plants close, so.
Okay, so we're contract, award contract, Crossroads Asphalt Columbia, the amount of $69,642 for the Sheffield Township Street Improvement Project. I believe this was for eight in Texas avenues. There was two bids received on August 29th, and it will be paid from...
The CDBG FY10.
Also moved.
A second. Anything further? Mr. Kelo?
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more confusing comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Grasgator?
Commissioners, I have one matter, excuse me, of imminent court action that I would like to discuss in the Executive Session.
Imminent court action?
Wow.
Commissioners, good morning. Well, prior to our meeting here this morning, Commissioner Kelo and I attended Team Lorraine County Board meeting, and I see Steve Moore walked in, so we had to leave a little bit early. That meeting had gone on a little bit longer, would have made us late for a meeting. So Steve, do you want to come up and give a recap of what happened at the Team Lorraine County meeting and fill us in on, no? You don't, really?
No, he doesn't.
Do we miss anything?
Um, no.
No, okay. We had Mr. Waltermeyer from Team Neo there, and the foundation gave a, you do want to talk, see? I knew it. A big check, and it wasn't just a large amount, it was actually a big check, so if you want to talk about that. We also had two issues that the Board were going to vote on, one being the quarter percent sales tax for Lorraine County, and also the JVS issue, so.
Right, well, well, thank you very much. Sorry, you caught me by surprise. My name is Steve Moore, I'm the President of Team Lorraine County. What Team Lorraine County is charged to do is to market Lorraine County, to bring in new jobs and new business investment, as well as work with our current businesses to help them to expand and make Lorraine County the, the right place for their business. In reference to what Commissioner Kokoski had mentioned in regard to, we had a guest speaker today, Tom Waltermeyer from Team Neo, and as many of you probably know, there are some large changes going on, on the state level, which certainly will affect us on the regional and local level, in regard to economic development statewide with the creation of Jobs Ohio. Team Neo has been granted $4.1 million to carry out the mission of economic development in the northeast Ohio region, and I think that one, one important thing to state is because of our work with, with our partners here in the Lorraine County Growth Partnership, as well as with Team Neo, one of, one of the justifications for the award that Team Neo got was the amount of projects that are done as far as business attraction or expansion in, in northeast Ohio. And as far as the 18-county region of northeast Ohio, Lorraine County had the second highest amount of projects for the given year that, that was studied. So I guess in light of everything that, that is going on in the environment that we are in, we're still making progress, we're still getting Lorraine County out there, and we are still expanding our businesses and bringing new businesses in. So we certainly appreciate your support of Team Lorraine County and our efforts, and our efforts together in partnership to, to bring in that new job investment.
You want to talk about the, the big check that you got today?
Uh, yes. We were proud to have guests from Ray Kuching, from the Board of the Community Foundation of Lorraine County, as well as Margot Hirth, one of the staff members of the Community Foundation of Lorraine County, and we were a grantee this year for a two-year cycle of an award of $15,000 to help us to carry out our mission of bringing new business investment into Lorraine County. So it's always important for us, if you look at our Board and our investors, you know, there are some important organizations and people that are involved and believe in what we are doing. Community Foundation coming on board being one of them, we're, we're very pleased with, and we're located right here on the 5th floor of the Administration Building, so feel free to give me a call or stop on up if, if you want to find out more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, this weekend, I, I saw Commissioner Kelo at the Labor Day Festival, it was a wet and wild day that day. Did you make it out there? You said you were going to go with your son, Commissioner Williams. I don't know, it was pretty wet.
With the rain, he used his head and said he didn't want to go.
Okay. I also had a lengthy discussion with John Bourne yesterday regarding Nancy Finai. I see Nancy's in the audience. We may have some issues if, what he said, they, there may be a layoff in that department, and she does our, our Phase 2 for the EPA mandates that we face here in Lorraine County, and I, I don't know what we're going to do if we, we lose Nancy, so something that we may want to talk about in Executive Session also.
Well, we, we obviously give soil and water money for those services, so if they layer off and they can't provide the services, we won't give money anymore. How's that sound? And what's there to really discuss? We have to have those, those inspections done, so I'm hoping that, you know, they, they understand that, and, but, I don't, I mean, didn't you, you did allocate them general fund money this year?
Right.
And I thought that specific purpose was to do those inspections. I mean, I can use some clarification if that's, if I'm thinking incorrectly on that.
No, that was the intent and purpose of the appropriation, because they get a match from the straight directives to what we give them.
I think that we...
$78,000?
Seventy, yeah.
How much?
Seventy-eight, I believe.
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand.
So they're going, they're going to lay us off, I guess they, we don't give them $75,000. That's pretty easy.
I think we already gave it to them, don't we? Don't we give it to them at the beginning of the year?
I don't know what kind of draw they're on. I, we say...
Don't we give them, at the beginning of the year, they get the whole amount?
You know, my, my understanding clearly was that you were giving that allocation because they were performing those services.
For Nancy's work, or for the engineers and techs?
Well, the MPDES, whoever was handling that, that was our intent, was to have the MPDES done for the counting through soil and water.
Right, and let me, let me indicate this, that, that's a money loser. The fees that are out there, I had it somewhere, it's probably just laying on my desk, I was looking at that in the Building Department. We don't take in much money at all toward paying for those fees and inspections. They have to be done, it's one of those mandates from the EPA that required us to, to do the Level 2, and we did develop a countywide policy, but we don't, either you're going to charge more to the developers to, you know, get that in line with being able to afford to have somebody do that, or you're going to continue to make it a general fund supplement, which the $75,000, I bet you out of that, probably $65,000 to $68,000 supplementing, because we're only bringing in about $5,000 or $6,000 in fees. Excuse me?
I'm sorry, I was just talking to myself, I apologize.
Nancy, did you want to comment on it?
I did our turn.
What, what's going on with...
Oh, there's required inspections though, Randy.
Your position and...
I wasn't aware of the conversation, should have returned more. I mean, I didn't come up to talk about these two.
You're still performing your duties as the Phase 2?
You know, in fact, we've had, we've had quite a bit of clarification through the Community Development Department, the Stormwater District, and the Engineers Office, and, and our office with, you know, how we're streamlining that process. I think it's become much better, and we just met, what, about a week ago? We had the EPA.
We did.
It was here, and we all had a really great meeting. I think we were about an hour and a half, two hours into the meeting, and so we're getting, we're getting much better at what we're doing, and much more efficient in what we need to be doing, and so I would hate to see a change happen.
Right. He, he talked about the engineers and techs that they have, that they weren't, can't, they don't have the money to pay for both you and all those services, so like, basically one of those, we're going to have to go.
What's left in our department is myself, which I oversee the MPDS Phase Two on behalf of the commissioners, and that's what we get the $75,000 for, and my administrative assistant. We've lost all of our technical staff, so I assume all the technical responsibilities. But as long with the MPDS Phase Two, we work with Community Development and the Engineers' Office as well, and we collaborate extremely well, like Mr. Cordes says, when we have an issue, we meet, and we seem to resolve it very nicely, and things move on. So as far as your conversation with Mr. Bourne yesterday, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that conversation. Yeah, we do have budget issues, and we're hoping that we are funded next year for Phase Two.
Are you guaranteed your position till the end of the year, or is it a board, does their board decision whether you stay or go?
It's my board of supervisors that make that determination. I'd like to still remain. I didn't realize I was on the line.
Okay.
You're looking this way, Commissioner.
Maybe I wasn't supposed to talk about that.
Well, I mean, this is something, it may have reemerged, but we've talked about this before with the cuts out there, and so it's not really a new issue, and a lot of people are tense right now, there's a lot of budget cuts coming, and people, when they have uncertainty, they have fears, and but we need this work done, and if soil and water is not going to provide that work, then we need to get it done a different way. And with the cuts that are coming, that money would have to be moved to an area where we could pay for those services. Now, if it's been exhausted for the remainder of the year, we'll figure that out, but going into 2012, we're going to have to really revisit that, and I believe that money's also, is it leveraged out there against other funds?
Yeah, I think it's...
Fifty-fifty.
From the state.
The state matches it with funds.
This year, we were lucky enough for 2011, 2012, to get an appropriation of 90%, so we were pretty grateful about that, to our surprise.
And I think that's why it's done, we had to appropriate the whole amount so they could get the full match.
Correct, right. They'll only appropriate on a full amount, if it would have been partial payments, we wouldn't have gotten that amount.
Correct.
Or that percentage, I should say.
I'm not sure where to go with this.
I'm sorry, I can't answer your question.
Okay.
Can we bring the, that board in, have a conversation with them, find out where they're at?
Certainly can invite them. I'll do that today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my report. Sorry.
Speaking of soil and water OSU extension, I attended the Farm Bureau annual dinner the other night. Always a good crowd, good discussion points. Everybody had issues from the SB Five to the sales tax, to road patrols, to the jail, the gamut. It was a very good dinner to attend, and was able to speak to a lot of people. Again, Labor Fest went very well. I was there through all three reins, handed out some information in regards to the quarter percent temporary sales tax. I sent out some information here, there to the two other commissioners, and to our prosecutor and sheriff on issues they were comfortable with, and that was the language we distributed based on the hearing we had last Wednesday. Also, I need to ask the board, and I spoke to Commissioner Williams last week, October 12th, I've been invited to a meeting with Mark Kwame, the Director of Jobs Ohio, with Steve Arndt from Ottawa County, and Debbie Lieberman from Montgomery County. I need to have the excuse from that meeting, because is it a Wednesday meeting, or if we can move the meeting to either the Tuesday or the Thursday?
Well, I would prefer to move it to Tuesday.
The only conflict I have is that's a solid waste policy committee meeting, but I'm sure.
Unless we move one or the other up or forward. If solid waste, we move theirs, or we move ours up, you know, by an hour.
Either way.
What time is solid waste?
Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock, Brian Person starts a meetings.
Is it two hour?
About. We could make it 12 o'clock on October 11th then, as a meeting start. Sorry to inconvenience people, but like at 12 o'clock would probably work best, I can come out of solid waste policy committee meeting, then we can, you know, hold our meeting.
If that's what you like to do, we'll do it.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
Pardon me? The only issue with that, Randy, and we've talked about it in the past, we've done it, is the department's staffs for all the departments that have to be represented here. You know, you have township people here, you have...
We have a meeting for the public, so we have the department staff here having an evening meeting for the public to see what happens.
I think we'd have probably just a special agenda for that, to talk about whatever would be public information, I mean, here's the business of the county, so I mean, it can be brought for discussion, I'm not particular when we have our meetings, but we do have to have certain staff here during the day. If O'Dowd's going to present, I don't think they're showing up here at seven o'clock at night to do, based on what their schedule might be, or staff, so.
And just to remind you, the day before is a holiday.
Oh, we better make it Thursday then.
No, that's fine, I mean, just like you know.
Yeah, everybody's got their stuff in by, you know, Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday.
We have it on month, we have to have everything done prior to...
Yeah, but then, how do we get our agenda?
Well, you have it to us by Friday.
I'll have it Friday.
Right, Friday.
So basically, I'll be working on two agendas on that Wednesday. I got it, if that's what you want, I'll do it.
Wouldn't it be easier to do it on Thursday, though, or no?
I'm not particular when, I just, that Wednesday, that or I can miss this meeting.
Yeah, Thursdays are difficult for me.
Oh, okay.
That's fine, let's go with the Tuesday then.
Tuesday at noon.
October 11th at 12 o'clock. All right, and then I also have a meeting scheduled September 22nd in Columbus. We're meeting with the Department of Development person, Nate Green, who is now moving over to the Jobs Ohio program for a full meeting on September 22nd, which doesn't affect our commissioners meeting, but I'm going to need to take either Don Romancik or Pat Metzger, so whoever you can find free, Mr. Cordes, to send down with me.
No problem.
With the explanations, and that'll be September 22nd. I guess that's the end of my report, that covers everything. Mr. Williams?
Well, I'll go through the numbers, but we talked about this earlier, but I know there's some elected officials, or there were, I thought, in here. Going to be contacting all elected officials to look at doing a fourth quarter cut to prepare for next year's deficit, basically 10% of what I proposed last week. And the other thing I wanted to look at doing was getting a board approval to deappropriate $750,000 from the county clerk. As we know, he's looking at a million dollar carryover, I'd like to just go ahead and get that money transferred over to the general fund as soon as possible.
Well, we wouldn't be, let me clarify if I may, because I know what you're intending on doing, we wouldn't be transferring any of that money to the general fund, that would be up to him.
Okay.
And how he handled that, but if you deappropriated, which is your authority to do, we would deappropriate those line items from his budget, which would cause him a shortage, which would therefore, I think, push him to have to bring those, authorize moving those monies to the general fund, and then you would have to reappropriate those monies back to the clerk of court.
I think a simpler process would be ask the clerk to just transfer those dollars here out of the title fund. And he said he would, so. Again, I don't want to make any more paperwork on what we have to do, if we can send a request over to the clerk of courts to do a transfer of what he considers the excess title funds, which is in the amount of approximately $700,000, he had told us at a meeting last week and then three weeks prior.
Yes.
Saves all the paperwork.
If he'll do it.
Lisa's shaking her head yes, eliminates all that paperwork.
Well, it does.
I mean, what does that account, I mean, I understand...
It would go into the carryover for next year.
Right, but why do we want to make the carryover look bigger than what it is?
Well, it's just an accounting at this point.
Okay.
I mean, we've talked about it, it's not anything new that we're aware of, it would just make it larger into the carryover number for next year's appropriations, so if we do it now, or we do it in November, it doesn't matter either way, so. But if you'd like to do it now, send the request, and I'm sure he will transfer what he considers the excess.
No, I...
Well, don't you call and ask him, Tom, you and him have a real good relationship based on last week's meetings.
Let me see if we have, I have a clear understanding, so when we do this, we're all on the same page. Commissioner Williams wanted to deappropriate $750,000, so the request, therefore, to the clerk of courts will be to move $750,000 from his special revenue account to the general fund?
No, that's not what I propose. What I propose is just asking him to do the transfer to our general fund, and not lower the...
The reason I asked for that clarification is, you two are saying two different, similar, but they're two different things.
Versus all the paper to do the appropriation, deappropriation, then the shortfall, and then have it transferred back over, and then to reappropriate to fill the shortfall is too many steps, so just send him a letter asking for him to do the transfer over, and then we don't have to do the other exercise to get to the same result, is what I said.
So I'm not asking for a specific number?
Well, he said next to $700,000, he said approximately, so see where he's at on that, and then if it is any different than that or lower, then we can deal with it. But based on the conversations we had, and that's why we did the budget hearings and discussions, he had approximately $700,000 in excess that could be transferred to the general fund, which would meet the same goal you're asking for, without having to do the deappropriation and reappropriation and transfer of funds.
As long as we get the $700,000 back into the general fund, I'm okay with it. If he doesn't transfer it over, then we'll take it to the next level.
Well, he said he would.
I understand, we'll know for next meeting.
Okay. All right, end of report.
Don't you think that kind of confuses people to a certain degree, that now we're showing more revenue?
It's not, it's just money that, we're taking the money ahead of time, making sure that the money is going to be in our budget. My concern is, is last year he gave you, what, $200,000? He had about $700,000 that he could have went through and did the transfer on. I don't know, call me a little cautious.
Okay.
Okay?
Just to make sure that he doesn't spend, is that what you're worried about?
Cash in hand is always better.
Okay. It's fine.
End of report.
Madam Clerk?
Word correspondence?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kalo?
Aye.
Skakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? We've got a pretty good crowd today.
Mary Beth?
Hi, Mary Beth, welcome.
I like your bracelet.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your voicemail, too.
You're welcome. I'm Mary Beth Derekito from Huntington Township. One of my residents asked me to come here and speak on her behalf, because she couldn't come today. She's a retired lady, owns a small business at this time, and I've talked to her about the sales tax increase, which at this point in time, she says she will not support, and she will encourage other people not to support it. What she would like, and I think it would be helpful right now, would be if the three of you went around to the county, maybe picked four places at the different parts of the county, had evening meetings, and explained to people just how serious this situation is, how this money would be handled, and that they can be assured that it would go into things like the sheriff's department and the administration, administrative offices here that really need it so badly, and I really believe if you don't get out and make this effort to contact the public and convince them, this is not going to pass. And I'm sorry, because I think it'll be devastating.
Well, you promised to have the lights on this time for me? Yeah?
Yeah, so I didn't...
I said, you promised to have the lights on this time for me?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Last time I was out, your lights went out.
Well, I don't know, I can promise you no earthquakes, tsunamis, or forest fires, but lights, I can't promise.
If you can have those resident, attend one of the meetings, I'll definitely go out there.
Okay.
If you let my assistant know what meetings she'll be attending, and I'll make sure I'm out there. I do go to the Township Association meetings and that.
I know, but once in the past, the commissioners came to Wellington, as I recall, and it wasn't a regular commissioners' meeting, it was just to explain a situation, whatever it happened to be at the time, I can't remember, but I really think you could maybe go to Lorraine Community College, which would be a great venue to have a lot of people come. You could go to the college in Wellington, they do have a branch there, and I think you could pick a couple other places around the county where people would have a chance to come in the evening and hear about this, because there's a lot that can't be here during the day.
Were you able to convince her?
Not yet.
No?
Not yet, and I've been trying to tell people.
What was her reason for saying no, just because she doesn't want to pay more taxes?
No, it's not necessarily that, she's just not sure how it will be used and whether it actually is necessary, and unfortunately, a lot of people feel that way, and I don't know any way to change that unless you just get out and meet with them.
Well, the ballot language itself specifically states where that money's going to go, and that's to the justice system, so it goes to all those various things, the sheriffs, the clerk of course, the prosecutor, the coroner, you know, all those necessary services, so there's no question as to where that money will go.
Well, I haven't seen the ballot language, and I don't know how many people have, but if you can find some way to get that information around this county, I think you need to do it.
We had to get our facts and things in order before we made any presentations, and we still need to go to all the newspaper editors, and hopefully they'll start getting the word out exactly where the money's going to go, how it's going to be spent, why it's needed, what services are going to be cut if the sales tax does not pass, so.
Well, I encourage you to consider her idea and her suggestion, because I really think you need to build up some trust in the county.
Mary Beth, we have been scheduling speaking at the civic groups. Commissioner Williams a couple, and Avon Lake, I've scheduled a couple for October 6th, so I mean, we're available, we're just putting it all together on how it's going to operate and go forward, except we're just finishing up what's going to be lost. We, as I said, we had a piece of literature out there describing the sales tax quarter percent temporary at the Labor Fest, I ran off 600 pieces of labor donated, we put together that showed basically a recap of our last few meetings, of what's going to suffer, and then we're having other discussions, but we hope to have something going, and then next week it is a concentrated campaign, so I mean, it's available, the Huntington Township trustees would like to host the meeting.
We would be happy to.
During one of your meetings, when your public shows up, one of us are more than willing to, you know, you meet twice a month, correct?
Right.
So the 18 townships...
And we can always have a special meeting.
Right, so if you can get the public there, we're all, any one of us are willing to speak, so if we all take a township a week...
Okay, I will check and see what days available, and call in and...
Mary Beth, maybe next week at the Township Association, we can set up like three or four townships to host meetings, and I'm sure our office and the sheriff will be there.
Correct. Not just the commissioners, but the prosecutor and sheriff's department, correct?
Okay, I think that's a story.
Thanks for the suggestion.
Okay, thank you.
Shirley R. Johnson Oberlin, I'm just here to back Mary Beth up. This is exactly what was said at the last meeting by Mr. Corey, who was sitting over there, Mr. Will, and I forget somebody else, I have it in my notes, that you must explain what county government means, and what the deficits will be, what will happen to programs, what will happen if they don't pass the tax. They don't understand county government. When you say that monies go to the justice system, they don't know what all that means. They don't understand that it means delay in cases that are not investigated in time, and people staying in jail when they shouldn't be there because they haven't had a fair trial, and all the things that were mentioned last time. You have to get out and do that. That suggestion was a good one, but you have to do more than that.
I think we actually got a decent piece of the literature together, that we put together, that the board looked at and revised, and that Mr. Kalo was handing out, so that's going to start going out. We just want to make sure that, one, that we're on the same page with everything, and we had to get the information from the other elected officials before we started going out there and telling people what benefits would be reduced, so. And you're going to start seeing us out there more and more. One thing is, if you start going through and campaigning too early, the literature engine ends up in the trash can, so you'll see us going through, talking with individuals, and I believe we're doing that already, and I know Mr. Kalo's been out there, Mr. Skakowski, and I've had an invite to individuals to come up to my office as well, so.
David Ashenhurst Oberlin, I've missed your last couple of meetings, I read about them in the papers, I missed them on TV as well, but I would back up what Shirley and Mary Beth both said. I pulled two stints on the Board of Mental Health table at the county fair, I went over to see what commissioners were in, and they weren't at the times I was there. But I also picked up copies of a thing that JVS is handing out, which doesn't have any campaign disclaimer on it, but the chair of our Board of Elections or the previous chair, Tom Smith, is their counsel of record, I believe, so that if this was a campaign item that needed a disclaimer, it probably would have had it. But it does talk about the issue that they're putting on the November 8th ballot, and it is early, and it may end up in the trash. I've seen them also in kiosks down in Oberlin, so this is being put out as information about JVS, and not as campaign information, but very succinct, and I've got three of them for you all. October 10th is Candidates Night in Oberlin, I hope we will have one of you there who can speak on the issue, and I hope when there are other Candidates Nights for other municipalities that you attend those, or send somebody who can speak on it and can have something in their hands, I'd really like to see the thing you were handing out at the Labor...
I've got some on my desk.
Okay, well...
Tony can get you a couple.
I would be very happy to have them, and I just encourage, as well as speaking about it, that you, I'm a visual guy, and some other people are too, and, you know, can really sort of draw on it and stuff, and if you put some pictures and numbers together, those of us who think in those terms, I think, will go through this and will be able to say with more authenticity, if not any more confidence, because I think some of us are pretty confident that these things are out there, but will know exactly what we're talking about if they get on paper and get in front of us. And I realize, I take commission... And I realize, I take Commissioner Williams' point about too soon is too soon, but it's quickly not becoming too soon anymore. I think everybody agrees that Labor Day is what kicks off the real season, but as they say, the idea that JVS already had a piece out at the County Fair, you know, discussing their November 8th issue and saying what they consider, I mean, all of these other things, the newspaper accounts and what people hear is, or take home, or from their personal visits to your office, Commissioner Williams, are, end up being hearsay, or they forget, or they don't explain it as well as you do. You've got to take every opportunity to say the story you all three agree on, and this is one way. Thank you.
Thanks, David. Anyone else wishing to address the Board this morning? Motion to go on executive session is outlined by the County Prosecutor and County Administrator?
Second.
Mr. Kallo.
Aye.
Skowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, and click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.
Pedestrian injuries represent the second largest number in motor-related deaths. In the current report by the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, of the 812 traffic fatalities for children ages 5 to 9, almost one-third, that's 254, were pedestrian fatalities. These numbers were just very staggering to me in this office. Most of these were from pedestrian crossings, children not educated in crossing streets where there are sidewalks and obviously stoplights, or where there are no sidewalks and there are stop signs. So, basically, it was based on the fact that they aren't getting proper education, or they hadn't had any education on how to cross streets with sidewalks or without sidewalks. So, that's what really got us motivated to look into this and do something about it.
County Engineers' Office is quite proud to announce that the Safe Routes to School Program has been initiated throughout Lorraine County. We're very excited about this, to help these children from grades K to 4, teaching them to walk the streets safely is very important to us. We've seen statistics that quite frankly shock us. Many times, we read and see stories of pedestrians being hit by automobiles in Lorraine County, and it just tears my heart to see these children from K to 4 part of that. This program is to stop that, or help diminish those type of situations, and educate these children on walking and crossing the streets safely, and we're quite happy to announce that.
Most of our workshop was developed and made in-house, simulated sidewalks, simulated streets. We have actual working stoplights, the pedestrian crossing signs that actually work, operational railroad crossings. We also have the regular road signs, like your pedestrian crossing, your stop sign, your railroad sign. So, we have all of these different things that the children can not only visualize, but then we actually interact the children in those situations, so they can not only see, but they can use these in their learning abilities on how to cross the streets with and without sidewalks. We've had so many good responses back from the children, and of course, it's just like anything else with children, when you ask for volunteers, when you're talking in a group of 60, and you can only have eight, it's amazing at the hands that go up, you know, does anybody want to volunteer? Well, everybody wants to volunteer. We make them go over these skills that we're trying to teach them, not only the volunteers, but the group as a whole. So, basically, we have the whole class interacting. So, if they say left, right, left, behind you, in front of you, once, they say it at least eight or 10 times before the workshop is over. So, we've had many teachers and many principals tell us, and we even had one child that came up to us and said, you know what, Ms. Spansky, we were going to cross the street the other day, and we remembered, look left, look right, look left. So, that was very rewarding. And so, I think the repetition, the interaction with the children and with the items in our workshop is very important to them and to us. Before you even go into the safety part of it, they're in awe over the traffic light, and then our railroad crossing signals actually work, so they're just like, oh, ooh! And we get up there and we tell them, and we even give them some trick questions, you know, we'll say, well, we can see that train all the way down the track. Do you think we can make it, because you're fast and I'm fast, and we can run? And of course, they're very enthusiastic, and no, we shouldn't do this. So, we teach them that in some urban areas, you will not have the gates that come down to keep you actually from crossing, that you may just have two sets of tracks, and just because one goes by and the signals stop, doesn't mean that another one can't come from the other direction. So, we tell them it's very, very imperative that they stay back from the tracks, and they wait till those signals stop and to look both ways. And even once those signals stop, to look both ways, and they should never run across the railroad tracks, they should walk and continue to look both ways, because it's not safe, and they could fall, they could injure themselves if they're alone, if they're not with someone, it could be very dangerous, because not only could they injure themselves, they may not have help if there is a train coming, because they are so small. And as you know, some of those tracks are very large, and you're talking in kindergarten through 4th grade, some of those children are very small children. The main thing is, is that we tell them that only you know when it's safe. You have to make that ultimate decision, so make sure that you know that it's safe before you cross those railroad tracks or a street. One of the other things that we cover in the safety workshop, and it's also repeated in our video, children don't have that perception of the miles per hour. It's very dangerous, and the same thing with trains. We tell them that train could take, you know, forever, it's way down there, but we don't know the actual miles per hour. We decided to use videos. The first one is geared for kindergarten and 1st grade, and that is Auto the Auto, put out by AAA.
Hi, kids! A lot of times, you have to walk to get to places, and when you're walking, you have to be especially careful of cars and bicycles. Oh, no, those kids are walking the wrong way! That's dangerous! I'm going to talk with these kids. Down at the clubhouse, they're talking about the safe way to walk on streets without sidewalks.
I say you can walk across the street anywhere you want, as long as you look first, and don't get squished flat by a car.
That's a fairly simple way of looking at safety. There are actual rules and laws for walking.
Yeah, but the most important one is you don't get squished flat. Who's right, Maggie? Patrick or us?
I guess in a sense, everyone's right. The main idea is to get there safely, but there are some rules to help you get there safely, like don't run out into the street without...
The second video, we show 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade, and it is put together by the National Safety Council along with Honda, and they developed the first humanoid robot.
Hey, Asimo. What's up, Asimo? How's it going?
Asimo, this is Michael. Michael, this is Asimo.
How come you dressed in a robot suit?
It's not a suit. I'm a real robot. My name, Asimo, stands for Advanced Step in Innovative Mobility. I'm the world's most advanced humanoid robot. I can walk forwards, backwards, and even climb stairs just like a human. So, what's the first rule about crossing the street?
Stopping at curbs.
Correct. First, always stop at the curb. Then make sure no cars are coming. You want to look left.
It's clear.
Then right, to see if any cars are coming from the other direction.
That's clear, too.
Cars move fast. There might already be a new car to the left, so look left again.
Car coming.
See what I mean?
Okay, he's gone.
Kids love this, they relate to Asimo, as well as the younger children relate to Auto, who is an animated automobile, and he tells them about crossing streets. Asimo does the same thing, and he actually goes through with the children and tells them how to cross the street at an intersection with a traffic light, with a pedestrian crossing. He also teaches them how to cross, because a lot of children at schools have parked cars, he goes over the issues of how to cross when there are parked cars. So, he does a number of different things, how to cross the street when there are no sidewalks. So, they both cover the basic skills, one is just geared a little bit more for the different age groups.
I think it was really nice, because they had a real-life robot talk to you about safety, and you got to actually do what he said was safe. He said when there are parked cars, to make sure there are no drivers in before you cross the street.
It's a good idea, because, like I said, the kids could walk through the whole process of crossing streets with a crosswalk, without a crosswalk, at the intersection, what happens if you're crossing in between two parked cars. Those are things that parents don't teach their kids. They go to Safety Town, and they learn, look left, look right, look left again, and they go. And even my own son, who's a kindergartner, he just did Safety Town, and I still catch him flying across the street, and all I have to do is say, Matthew, remember Asimo? And he stops, and he thinks, and he does all the steps that he was taught in the video.
It was a great refresher, especially for them, now knowing, you know, what to do, and kind of even additional things that they maybe not have, may not have been told or considered before.
Most of the kids did their little safety program back when they were getting ready to go to kindergarten. They start out learning all those safety rules. Then as time goes on, if you don't reinforce those safety rules and keep telling them, just like we do as adults, we think we're safe. We don't have to follow those rules anymore, we can do what we want, we can take a chance and run across the road, and I think this program was very good at reinforcing the fact that even though we're growing up, we still have to be careful. We still have to follow the signs, we still have to follow the railroad crossings, especially around here in Amherst. We tend to have a little trouble with the railroad crossings and kids wanting to play on them. So, I think it was a good review, I think it was done in a fun, learning way, and the kids really enjoyed it. We're very happy to have everyone here at St. Joseph's School.
In 2009, Mr. Carney felt that if we expanded the program and went into the technological era, that we could cover more schools and help more students. We felt that 2nd, 3rd, and 4th graders would get much more out of it and enjoy it if it was on a computer. We use one disc that's called Walk Smart for 2nd and 3rd graders. It teaches the children where to walk, it teaches them things that they should know about traffic signals, and the third part of it is watching for cars. The 4th grade disc is called Safer Journey. That is in a three-part section with a fourth part that's added called Library, so that if they want to go back in as 4th graders and actually look up anything that they just viewed, it will give them a description. Each one allows the student to interact on the computer individually.
You move the mouse back and forth. Try it.
We thought the student will look at it, because they love to work on computers, so that they would look at it as fun and a game, and each student can work at their own level or at their own pace. Our response has been amazing.
They enjoy being on the computer, so I think just by clicking and being able to listen and observe those things, it's more interactive with them. This program is teaching the skills of being more observant as they're crossing the street, and being more aware of what's going on around them.
It makes me work harder. We have to guess if the cars can come from which way. Gets my brain on learning.
It helps me learn how to cross streets and how to watch for cars.
You have to look both ways when you go across the street and everything, because I like, because it would actually teach me something.
You know, sometimes we just think that students know exactly where they should be walking, there's a sidewalk, and we know that they should cross at the light and look both ways.
It tells you what to do and what not to do in the street.
This just reinforces, because sometimes the students don't know all of those things. They haven't always been taught. They are much better off for being part of the program.
If it saves one life, we feel like we've made a contribution. It's our way to give back to the communities.
Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alariah. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Welcome to the September 7th, 2011 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners meeting. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Commissioner Williams, your dog today?
Okay, Jack, what type of dog do we have here?
Well, today, Commissioner, we got a, I believe, a Chow Shepherd or Chow Lab mix. It's got the purple tongue, found on Victory Avenue in Lorraine, and it'll be available for adoption on Saturday at 3 o'clock, and this dog is, takes to, you know, get a little bit too, and he likes, he likes me, he likes to, he likes to play, but like I say, anybody walking by, he has to warm up to, but still, this is a real nice dog, and he was due for adoption today, but I tell you what, because I know nobody was going to come in for him today, because we had nobody outside, had nobody outside, so I figured I'd go ahead and promote this dog. Currently, we got about 42 dogs at the kennel. We need some help, and anything we can do, and that's about it, other than, you know, just thank everybody for their support that come in, you know, patrons of the kennel, and we do a lot of good things out there. Thank you.
Have any good guard dogs out there?
Uh, two of them.
Two of them?
Yeah.
Okay, I may have to stop down there.
Guard dog.
All right, thanks, Lloyd, Jack.
Protect from yourself.
Madam Clerk?
I'm going to do ODOT first, right? Today, we have Alan Beal, Deputy Director, ODOT District 3, and Kimberly Conklin, Manager, Lorraine County Garage, and we're going to do you first.
Either one, Alan.
Good morning, Commissioners. What I'd like to do is take a few minutes this morning, because I feel it's extremely important to the Department of Transportation and my personal belief on how we can improve as far as our cost... as far as our customer focus with the locals. Uh, just to give you a little bit of a background, with the Department of Transportation, organizationally speaking, we have the District Deputy Director, obviously that runs the entire district office, which in the case of District 3 includes eight counties in our district. Uh, each county has a employee, which is referred to as the County Manager, and the County Manager really is responsible for the day-to-day operation of that county. So all of our road crews that you see go out there filling potholes or ditching or what have you, uh, are directed by the County Manager. Now, obviously, somebody in my position, you know, we come and go every four years, every eight-year cycle. Uh, so, so, uh, it's not as important that the locals get to know me as it is to get to know the County Manager, who withstands the test of time and administration changes. Uh, that being said, our County Manager in Lorraine County, Bill Kruger, recently retired after 30-some years of service with the Department of Transportation. And I wanted to take this opportunity to introduce to the Commissioners, our new County Manager for Lorraine County. And, uh, she's going to get up in a minute or so to speak for herself. Kimberly Conklin, who has been with the department for eight years now, was actually a transfer. She was the Medina County Manager prior to being appointed the position here in Lorraine County. Basically took a county, which at the time she was made the appointment in Medina County was probably one of our weaker counties as far as how it was operating. So she was able to really take that county and turn it around into a much better operating county when it comes to, um, meeting the public expectation. So I think she's definitely been tested and will be an asset to Lorraine County. So with that, I'd like to invite Kimberly to come up here and introduce herself and let her tell you what she has in her agenda for the future for Lorraine County.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alan.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to come in. Um, I won't take a lot of your time. I just wanted to mainly have the opportunity to meet you. I haven't had this opportunity before. I've been in Lorraine County for a very short amount of time at this stage of the game, primarily focused on, um, taking what the county is doing there, learning how their operations run and how we can better improve that in the future in terms of, you know, our customer focus, et cetera. Um, I'm now sort of moving into a new segue of trying to get out and, you know, meet the officials. I have the opportunity to come here today. Later this month, I'll have the opportunity to meet with the trustees. They've been kind enough to invite me to their agenda as well. So I will have that opportunity as well. We've been dealing with, in this very short amount of time, a lot of drainage issues in the county. With the amount of rain that we have had this year, it's been instrumental. I'm sure most of the other departments are dealing with the same type of issues that we're dealing with as well. And we're trying to get to each of those as quickly as possible. If there's something on your agenda that you have some interest in or would like to know some updates on, please don't hesitate to give me a call. I would be more than happy to meet with you and discuss those items with you. Going forward into the future, we're looking at all of our concerns, you know, in our long-range plan, planning out next year's work plan, as well as the years following that. Sometimes it seems like we're not doing a lot, because it takes a little while to get some of these projects rolling. Um, I don't ever want you to feel that, but so if you have any concerns, questions, anything along those lines, please don't hesitate to call. I'm going to leave some business cards with Teresa, so that if anyone has an interest or something in particular you're interested in hearing about, I would love to take the time to meet with you. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
Thank you, Alan.
All right.
Thank you. Alan, are you serving as the alternate on No Waka to Myron?
Yes.
Are you? Okay, good. Madam Clerk?
At 11 o'clock, we'll hear from the Veterans, under Job and Family, or Resolutions, Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Investments.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Transfers.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Bills.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Board of Elections, authorized the disposal of the punch card voting system that was last used in August 2005. Total estimated valuation is under $2,500.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorized various personnel actions, as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within District 3 Lorraine County Commissioners.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner Kelo. I do have a few issues I wish to discuss with the Board in Executive Session, one being a potential hire at the 911 Agency and also some issues with labor contracts. Specifically, we still have the Teamster contract for the, excuse me, detention home that we should review or at least discuss. And, uh, some outstanding issues with one of the FOP contracts. Both of those subjects are allowable for Executive Session discussions, and I would ask at the conclusion of our regular Board meeting today, we go into Executive Session and have those talks. Thank you.
Joining the National Moment of Remembrance of the 10th Anniversary of September 11th, everyone is asked to come together as a nation and observe a moment of silence to last for one minute, beginning at 1:00 PM, and seize all work or other activity to the maximum extent practicable and marking the moment in an appropriate manner, including by ringing bells, blowing whistles, or sounding sirens.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, if we could, I received from the Department of Public Safety through Tom Keller, our AMA Director, Ohio Department of Public Safety has released a short film in honor of the 10th Anniversary of 9/11. It is available at www-publicsafety.ohio.gov during the month of September. Uh, there's a, it's a complete list of participants, participants in honor of September 11th. Gene Thomas, Ohio Task Force One member, Technical Search Specialist, Sandra Lesko, Willoughby Hills Fire Department, Dr. Randy Marriott, Ohio Task Force One member, Steve Schubert, Ohio Task Force One member, Jack Rial, Ohio Task Force One member, Mike Palumbo, Ohio Task Force One member, and Daryl Perkins, Volunteer Box 21 Rescue Squad Dayton. Uh, it's a very good film. I will give this to Hal to put up on our camera, so you can look it up. Thank you.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
We need a development, enter an agreement with Cold Water Consulting LLC to apply for the Great Lakes Restoration Innovative Grant, requests for $1 million to create 21 jobs on restoration of Black River and improvement water quality. Said services will cost $4,000 if paid from contract services account and authorize County Administration to execute application.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Don, do you want to come up? I didn't think there was any backup data in the packet.
This is the one we talked about. I was, again, we were supposed to bring it up from the floor at the end of the meeting.
Oh, last week.
Last week, and, and we, we had such a difficult week there. And some of the issues we were dealing with, I had, forgot to remind you.
Right.
That I needed a quick resolution for this. Not that Don couldn't give you more information on this, but there's only going to be six of these grants available. Uh, and, and the component is to put people that are currently being served to the workforce development system into some jobs. So we, we had to have a job creation component and we had to work with the Workforce Development Agency to make sure that we had the proper folks that could, could be eligible for employment in this grant. So I think it's pretty exciting that they're doing job creation as an element of this, of being able to receive the grant. Competition's going to be keen, there's only $6 million out there.
And we pay $4,000 to get $1 million?
If, if we're successful, and as you know, we've, we've, we've had to do this before and we haven't always been successful, but sometimes you got to spend money to try to bring money home.
Okay.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under Job and Family, approve amendments to various resolutions authorized in state fiscal year 11 with various vendors and change, change in date from September 30, 2011 through December 31, 2011. One, Resolution 10-450, June 30, 2010, Common Ground Overland First Step Agreement increased value by $37,500. Resolution 10-670, September 22, North Center, Lorraine, Career Corridors Agreement increased value by $25,000. Resolution 10-671, September 22, Vocational Guide and Services, Illyria, The Work Agreement increased value by $25,000.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, receive and file annual report in accordance with Ohio Emergency Code 311.16 of all fines and costs collected by the Sheriff's Office for the year next preceding September 1, 2011, in the amount of $505,888.53.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, we had a discussion on some companies that were brought to our attention. They may have had some defects. We were going to award bids. I believe Mr. Thayer was here and he discussed that. And we had an opportunity to take a look at, at those issues. And being that it was a short week, we didn't get it on the agenda, but, Don, I don't have the policy. I have the, the awarding resolution that you asked for, but I didn't get a copy of the policy that, so I really want to have a little brief discussion with the Board on that, what we're recommending, so that we can move forward possibly with, with awarding some of these contracts. So a few of them are time-sensitive. You can just do it from the podium and...
Yeah. Thank you. The administrative staff and myself were, you know, taking a look at what we're doing currently and then some things to address issues that were brought up. What we've identified is to continue to ensure that, or we would recommend that we continue ensuring that the company has a proper workers' compensation coverage and that they are in compliance with the rules and regulations as they are, that they are current with the property taxes and through that, we would be checking the Lorraine County Auditor site for those companies located in Lorraine County. Uh, that we conduct a certified search of the state auditor's findings for recovery, so that if there are any outstanding issues with the state and their rules, the auditor puts together a list of companies. And how it works is we enter in the name of the company and it'll let us know whether or not there are any matches to the company name or the individual.
You know, Commissioners, with, with that, um, if there's a, a potential defect discovered on a primary bidder or responder to an RFP, we'll give them the opportunity to clarify that information, because sometimes information isn't updated as, as quickly as we'd like to believe. So we'll give them an opportunity before passing them by to comment on those things. But what we need from the Board is a resolution saying that these things have to be, um, either corrected or have been corrected and that these type of deficiencies will, um, preclude them from being a bidder on county projects. That's your decision.
From being awarded a bid, because we're not going to pre-check every company that bids, are we?
No, and I, and I probably misstated, we will not award bids to, and, and to those vendors. That's your choice. Now, there's no legal requirement out there that you don't do that. This, this would be your procedure. I, I need to make that clear. Uh, the, the, while I believe that everybody should be following every rule and every regulation wherever they are, uh, we're not required to check those things. This is something that came up and you wanted to look at a little more, and if you wanted, if you want to do that, we, we can, but you'll need to do that by resolution, so that somebody doesn't bid, come in and say, "Well, you don't have something that says that that disqualifies me." You need to have that on, on your, on your books, so to speak.
Well, I would make that motion to make sure everyone reaches those goals before we award a bid to them.
Right, I, I agree. So a second.
Anything further? Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
So in essence, that those, that bid that we were holding, we'll have to reject and send back out for bid? Or do we have a second bidder?
We do have a second bidder and then we would also have to provide him an opportunity.
To rectify that?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm, I'm passing down this to the Clerk. This was part of that package with, with, with some of the contracts, and we're going to ask that those be awarded today, because they're, they're, they're good.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve.
They have to be read, don't they?
Yeah, I did the whole resolution for Teresa.
Okay.
This is not what was brought up last week. This is something totally...
No, this is Crossroads Asphalt. It's a, I'm sorry, it is the, we were already out to bid on this one and it's an asphalt project, the resurfacing of two streets in Sheffield Township, and we're just a little bit concerned with the weather. They only make asphalt for a limited amount of time.
That's my bad. In fact, you, you, I thought it was tagged, it was tagged the last week's issue, but we needed the policy passed, so we could do these. Sandy's on vacation this week. I'm missing nine of my 10 fingers, so it's, I apologize for confusing the Board a bit on that, but...
Do you have the other two that were on hold?
Uh, those could wait a week. We want to make sure that the policy was passed and that we would go back and check those. Uh, those are home repairs, one's a furnace, so the weather isn't as big a deal there. The other is a roof, but it's a single roof, so we still have plenty of time to do that. The asphalt is a little more concerning to us. Plants close, so...
Okay, so we're, award contract, Crossroads Asphalt Columbia, the amount of $69,642 for the Sheffield Township Street Improvement Project. I believe this was for eight in Texas avenues. There was two bids received on August 29th, and it will be paid from...
CDBGFY10.
Okay.
Also moved.
A second.
Anything further? Mr. Kelo.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have no more confusing comments this morning. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Rescuer.
Commissioners, I have one matter, excuse me, of imminent court action that I would like to discuss in the Executive Session.
Imminent court action?
Imminent.
Wow.
Commissioners, we're going to...
Uh, well, prior to our meeting here this morning, Commissioner Kelo and I attended Team Lorraine County Board meeting, and I see Steve Moore walked in, so we had to leave a little bit early. Uh, that meeting had gone on a little bit longer, would have made us late for our meeting. So Steve, do you want to come up and give a recap of what happened at the Team Lorraine County meeting and fill us in on, no? You don't, really?
No, he doesn't.
Did we miss anything?
Um, no.
No, okay. Um, we had Mr. Walter Meyer from Team Neo there and the foundation gave a, you do want to talk, see? I knew it. A big check, and it wasn't just a, a large amount, it was actually a big check. So if you want to talk about that and... We also had two issues that the Board were going to vote on, one being the quarter percent sales tax for Lorraine County and also the JVS issue, so...
Right, well, well, thank you very much. Sorry, you caught me by surprise. My name is Steve Moore, I'm the President of Team Lorraine County. Uh, what Team Lorraine County is charged to do is to market Lorraine County, to bring in new jobs and new business investment, as well as work with our current businesses to help them to expand and, and make Lorraine County the, the right place for their business. Um, in, in reference to what Commissioner Kokoski had, uh, mentioned in, in regard to, we had a guest speaker today, Tom Walter Meyer from Team Neo. And, uh, as many of you probably know, there are some, uh, large changes going on, on the state level, uh, which certainly will affect us on the regional and local level in regard to economic development statewide with the creation of Jobs Ohio. Um, Team Neo has been granted $4.1 million to carry out the mission of economic development in the northeast Ohio region. Um, and I, I think that one, one important thing to state is because of our work with, with our partners here in the Lorraine County Growth Partnership, as well as with Team Neo, uh, one of, one of the justifications for the award that Team Neo got was the amount of projects that are done as far as business attraction or expansion, uh, in, in northeast Ohio. business attraction or expansion in northeast Ohio. And as far as the 18-county region of northeast Ohio, Lorraine County had the second highest amount of projects for the given year that was studied. So I guess in light of everything that is going on in the environment that we are in, we're still making progress. We're still getting Lorraine County out there. And we are still expanding our businesses and bringing new businesses in. So we certainly appreciate your support of Team Lorraine County and our efforts and our efforts together in partnership to bring in that new job investment.
You wanna talk about the big check that you got today?
Yes. We were proud to have guests from Ray Cushing, from the board of the Community Foundation of Lorraine County, as well as Margot Hirth, one of the staff members of the Community Foundation of Lorraine County. And we were a grantee this year for a two-year cycle of an award of $15,000 to help us to carry out our mission of bringing new business investment into Lorraine County. So it's always important for us, if you look at our board and our investors, you know, there are some important organizations and people that are involved and believe in what we are doing. Community Foundation coming on board being one of them, we're very pleased with. And we're located right here on the fifth floor of the administration building. So feel free to give me a call or stop on up if you wanna find out more.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Also, this weekend, I saw Commissioner Calo at the Labor Day Festival. It was a wet and wild day that day. Did you make it out there? You said you were gonna go with your son, Commissioner Williams. I don't know. It was pretty wet.
With the rain, he used his head and said he didn't wanna go.
Okay. I also had a lengthy discussion with John Bourne yesterday regarding Nancy Finai. I see Nancy's in the audience. May have some issues if what he said, there may be a layoff in that department. And she does our Phase Two for the EPA mandates that we face here in Lorraine County. And I don't know what we're gonna do if we lose Nancy. So something that we may wanna talk about in executive session also.
Well, we obviously give soil and water money for those services. So if they lay off and they can't provide the services, we won't give money anymore. How's that sound? And what's there to really discuss? We have to have those inspections done. So I'm hoping that, you know, they understand that. But I mean, you did allocate them general fund money this year.
Right.
And I thought that specific purpose was to do those inspections. I mean, I can use some clarification if I'm thinking incorrectly on that.
No, that was the intent and purpose of the appropriation, because they get a match from the straight directives to what we give them.
I think that we-
Seventy-eight thousand?
Seventy, yeah.
How much?
Seventy-eight, I believe.
Seventy-five thousand, seventy-eight thousand.
So they're gonna lay us off. I guess we don't give them $75,000. It's pretty easy.
I think we already gave it to them, didn't we? Don't we give it to them at the beginning of the year?
I don't know what kind of draw they're on. At least-
Don't we give them at the beginning of the year? They get the whole amount?
You know, my understanding clearly was that you were giving that allocation because they were performing those services.
For Nancy's work or for the engineers and techs?
Well, the MPDES, whoever was handling that, that was our intent, was to have the MPDES done for the county through soil and water.
Right. And let me indicate this. That's a money loser. The fees that are out there, I had it somewhere. It's probably just laying on my desk. I was looking at that in the building department. We don't take in much money at all toward paying for those fees and inspections. They have to be done. It's one of those mandates from the EPA that required us to do the Level Two. And we did develop a countywide policy, but we don't... Either you're gonna charge more to the developers to, you know, get that in line with being able to afford to have somebody do that. Are you gonna continue to make it a general fund supplement, which the $75,000, I bet you out of that, probably sixty-five to sixty-eight thousand supplementing, because we're only bringing in about five or six thousand dollars in fees. Excuse me?
I'm sorry. I was just talking to myself. I apologize.
Nancy, did you wanna comment on it?
I didn't do a return.
What's going on with-
Oh, there's required inspections though, Randy.
Your position and-
I wasn't aware of the conversation. Should have done more. I mean, I can come up with a topic based on this.
You're still performing your duties as the Phase Two?
In fact, we've had quite a bit of clarification through the Community Development Department, the Stormwater District, and the Engineers Office and our office with, you know, how we're streamlining that process. I think it's become much better. And we just met, what, about a week ago? We had-
We did.
The EPA was here. And we all had a really great meeting. I think we were about an hour and a half, two hours into the meeting. So we're getting much better at what we're doing and much more efficient in what we need to be doing. And so I would hate to see a change happen.
Right. He talked about the engineers and techs that they have, that they won't, can't... They don't have the money to pay for both you and all those services. So basically, one of those, we're gonna have to go.
What's left in our department is myself, which I oversee the MPDS Phase Two on behalf of the Commissioners. And that's what we get the $75,000 for, and my administrative assistant. We've lost all of our technical staff, so I assume all the technical responsibilities. But along with the MPDS Phase Two, we work with Community Development and the Engineers' Office as well. And we collaborate extremely well. Like Mr. Cordes says, when we have an issue, we meet and we seem to resolve it very nicely and things move on. So as far as your conversation with Mr. Bourne yesterday, I'm sorry. I wasn't aware of that conversation. Yeah, we do have budget issues. And we're hoping that we are funded next year for Phase Two.
Are you guaranteed your position till the end of the year? Or is it a board... Does their board decision whether you stay or go?
It's my board of supervisors that make that determination. I'd like to still remain. I didn't realize I was on the line.
Okay. I don't know. Maybe I wasn't supposed to talk about that.
Well, I mean, this is something that... It may have reemerged, but we've talked about this before with the cuts out there. And so it's not really a new issue. And a lot of people are tense right now. There's a lot of budget cuts coming. And people, when they have uncertainty, they have fears. But we need this work done. And if soil and water is not gonna provide that work, then we need to get it done a different way. And with the cuts that are coming, that money would have to be moved to an area where we could pay for those services. Now, if it's been exhausted for the remainder of the year, we'll figure that out. But going into 2012, we're gonna have to really revisit that. And I believe that money's also... Is it leveraged out there against other funds?
Yeah, I think-
Fifty-fifty.
From the state.
The state matches it with funds.
This year, we were lucky enough for 2011, 2012 to get an appropriation of 90 percent. So we were pretty grateful about that, to our surprise.
And I think that's why it's done. We had appropriate the whole amount so they could get the full match.
Correct. Right. They'll only appropriate on a full amount. If it would've been partial payments, we wouldn't have gotten that amount.
Correct.
Or that percentage, I should say.
I'm not sure where to go with this.
I'm sorry. I can't answer your question.
Okay.
Can we bring the board in and have a conversation with them, find out where they're at? Certainly can invite them. I'll do that today. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's the end of my report. Sorry.
Speaking of soil and water O-U extension, I attended the Farm Bureau Annual Dinner the other night. Always a good crowd, good discussion points. Everybody had issues from the SB Five to the sales tax, to road patrols, to the jail, the gamut. It was a very good dinner to attend and was able to speak to a lot of people. Again, Labor Fest went very well. I was there through all three reins, handed out some information in regards to the quarter percent temporary sales tax. I had sent out some information here today to the two other Commissioners and our prosecutor and sheriff on issues they were comfortable with. And that was the language we distributed, based on the hearing we had last Wednesday. Also, I need to ask the board, and I spoke to Commissioner Williams last week, October 12th, I've been invited to a meeting with Mark Kwame, the Director of Jobs Ohio, with Steve Arnt from Ottawa County and Debbie Lieberman from Montgomery County. I need to have the excuse for that meeting, because this is a Wednesday meeting, or if we can move the meeting to either the Tuesday or the Thursday.
Well, I would prefer to move it to Tuesday.
The only conflict I have is that's a solid waste policy committee meeting, but-
I'm sure.
We move one or the other upward forward. If solid waste, we move theirs, or we move ours up, you know, by an hour.
Either way.
What time is solid waste?
Nine o'clock. Nine o'clock Brian Parsons starts the meetings.
Is it two hour?
About. About. We could make it 12 o'clock on October 11th then.
That's good.
As a meeting start. Sorry to inconvenience people, but like at 12 o'clock would probably work best. I can come out of solid waste policy committee meeting, then we can, you know, hold our meeting.
If that's what you'd like to do, we'll do it.
Is the board comfortable with that?
Yes.
We have an evening meeting, Jeff.
Pardon me?
Why not have one evening meeting?
The only issue with that, Randy, and we've talked about it in the past, we've done it, is the department staffs for all the departments that have to be represented here. You know, you have township people here. You have-
We have a meeting for the public. So that's where we have the department staff. We're having an evening meeting for the public to see what happens.
I think we'd have probably just a special agenda for that, to talk about whatever would be public information. I mean, here's the business of the county. So, I mean, it can be brought for discussion. I'm not particular when we have our meetings, but we do have to have certain staff here during the day. If ODAT's gonna present, I don't think they're showing up here at seven o'clock at night to do, based on what their schedule might be, or staff, so.
And just to remind you, the day before is a holiday.
Oh, we better make it Thursday then.
No, that's fine. I mean-
Yeah, everybody's had their stuff in by, you know, Wednesday to Thursday to Friday.
We have to have it on month. We have to have everything done prior to-
Yeah, but then how do we get our agenda?
Well, you have it to us by Friday.
I'll Friday.
Right, Friday.
So basically, I'll be working up your agendas on that Wednesday.
Yeah.
I got it. If that's what you want, I'll do it.
Wouldn't it be easier to do it on Thursday, though? Or no?
I'm not particular when. I just, that Wednesday, that or I can miss the meeting.
Yeah, Thursdays are difficult for me.
Oh, okay.
That's fine. Let's go with the Tuesday then.
Tuesday at noon.
October 11th at 12 o'clock.
Okay.
All right. And then I also have a meeting scheduled September 22nd in Columbus. We're meeting with the Department of Development person, Nate Green, who is now moving over to the Jobs Ohio program for a full meeting on September 22nd, which doesn't affect our Commissioners meeting. But I'm gonna need to take either Don Romancik or Pat Metzger. So whoever you can find free, Mr. Cordes, to send down with me-
No problem.
...with the explanations. And that'll be September 22nd. I guess that's the end of my report. That covers everything. Mr. Williams?
Well, I won't go through the numbers, but we talked about this earlier. But I don't know if some elected officials, or there were, I thought, in here. I'm gonna be contacting all elected officials to look at doing a fourth quarter cut to prepare for next year's deficit, basically 10% of what I proposed last week. And the other thing I wanted to look at doing was getting a board approval to deappropriate $750,000 from the county clerk. As we know, he's looking at a million dollar carryover. I'd like to just go ahead and get that money transferred over to the general fund as soon as possible.
Well, we wouldn't be... I mean, clarify if I may, because I know what you're intending on doing. We wouldn't be transferring any of that money to the general fund. And that would be up to him.
Okay.
And how he handled that. But if you deappropriated, which is your authority to do, we would deappropriate those line items from his budget, which would cause him a shortage, which would therefore, I think, push him to have to bring those... authorize moving those monies to the general fund. And then you would have to reappropriate those monies back to the clerk of court.
I think a simpler process would be ask the clerk to just transfer those dollars here out of the title fund. And he said he would, so. Again, I don't wanna make any more paperwork on what we have to do. If we can send a request over to the clerk of courts to do a transfer of what he considers the excess title funds, which is in the amount of approximately $700,000, he had told us at a meeting last week and then three weeks prior.
Yes.
Saves all the paperwork.
If he'll do it.
Lisa's shaking her head, yes. Eliminates all that paperwork.
Well, it does.
I mean, what does that account... I mean, I understand-
It would go into the carryover-
Right. But why do we wanna make the carryover look bigger than what it is?
Well, it's just an accounting at this point.
Okay.
I mean, we talked about it. It's not anything new that we're aware of. It would just make it larger into the carryover number for next year's appropriations. So if we do it now or we do it in November, it doesn't matter either way, so. But if you'd like to do it now, send the request, and I'm sure he will transfer what he considers the excess.
No, I-
Why don't you call and ask him, Tom? You and him have a real good relationship, based on last week's meetings.
Oh, geez.
Let me see if we have a... I have a clear understanding. So when we do this, we're all on the same page. Commissioner Williams wanted to deappropriate $750,000. So the request, therefore, to the clerk of courts will be to move $750,000 from his special revenue account to the general fund?
No, that's not what I propose. What I propose is just asking him to do the transfer to our general fund and not lower the-
The reason I asked for that clarification is you two are saying two different... similar, but they're two different things.
Versus all the paper to do the appropriation, deappropriation, then the shortfall, and then to have it transferred back over, and then to reappropriate to fill the shortfall is too many steps. So just send him a letter asking for him to do the transfer over, and then we don't have to do the other exercise to get to the same result, is what I said.
So I'm not asking for a specific number?
Well, he said next to $700,000. He said approximately, so see where he's at on that. And then if it is any different than that or lower, then we can deal with it. But based on the conversations we had, that's why we did the budget hearings and discussions. He had approximately $700,000 in excess that could be transferred to the general fund, which would meet the same goal you're asking for, without having to do the deappropriation and reappropriation and transfer of funds.
As long as we get the $700,000 acting to the general fund, I'm okay with it. If he doesn't transfer it over, then we'll take it to the next level.
He said he would.
I understand. We'll know for next meeting.
Okay.
All right, end of report.
Don't you think that kinda confuses people to a certain degree, that now we're showing more revenue?
It's not. It's just money that... We're taking the money ahead of time, making sure that the money's going to be in our budget. My concern is, is last year he gave you, what, $200,000? He had about $700,000 that he could've went through and did the transfer on. I don't know. Call me a little cautious.
Okay.
Okay.
Just to make sure that he doesn't spend. Is that what you're worried about?
Cash in hand is always better.
Okay. It's fine.
End of report.
Madam Clerk?
Word correspondent?
Will the reading be waived?
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Kokoski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? We've got a pretty good crowd today.
Mary Beth.
Hi, Mary Beth. Welcome.
I like your bracelet.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for your voicemail, too.
You're welcome. I'm Mary Beth Derekito from Huntington Township. One of my residents asked me to come here and speak on her behalf because she couldn't come today. She's a retired lady, owns a small business at this time. And I've talked to her about the sales tax increase, which at this point in time, she says she will not support, and she will encourage other people not to support it. What she would like, and I think it would be helpful right now, would be if the three of you went around to the county, maybe picked four places at the different parts of the county, had evening meetings, and explained to people just how serious this situation is, how this money would be handled, and that they can be assured that it would go into things like the Sheriff's Department and the administration, administrative offices here that really need it so badly. And I really believe if you don't get out and make this effort to contact the public and convince them, this is not gonna pass. And I'm sorry, because I think it'll be devastating.
Well, you promised to have the lights on this time for me? Yeah?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't understand.
I said, you promised to have the lights on this time for me?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Last time I was out there, the lights went out.
Well, I don't know. I can promise you no earthquakes, tsunamis, or forest fires, but lights, I can't promise.
If you can have this resident attend one of the meetings, I'll definitely go out there.
Okay.
If you give my assistant know what meetings she'll be attending, and I'll make sure I'm out there. I do go to the Township Association meetings and that.
I know. But once in the past, the Commissioners came to Wellington, as I recall. And it wasn't a regular Commissioners meeting. It was just to explain a situation, whatever it happened to be at the time. I can't remember. But I really think you could maybe go to Lorraine Community College, which would be a great venue to have a lot of people come. You could go to the college in Wellington. They do have a branch there. And I think you could pick a couple of the places.